Thank you for this opportunity to just be here tonight, to be with each other, to do the city's business, Lord, and we pray that you give us wisdom and discernment and that you guide us through just doing our jobs for people of our city. In Jesus' sweet holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Call to order the meeting, City Council meeting of January 23rd, 2024.
Aye.
Hey, at least it wasn't 2005, like Vicki's now.
Oops. Do we need to start over? Call to order the meeting of January 23rd, 2025. My packet says four, see. Ally Reed lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first things first, we get to appoint a new council member, so I will need a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Pete Harris to Ward whatever position.
Two and two.
Ward two position to fill the vacancy left by.
Mr. Adams.
Jim Adams.
A second. Any discussion? Vicki?
J.P. Hodges. Louis Short.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Pete Harris. Chris Foster.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Motion carried. Okay, Pete, if you'll come with me, we will swear you in. Raise your hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Peter Harris.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state of Arkansas.
The Constitution of the state of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Ward two, position two.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Ward two, position two.
Ward two, position two.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Vicki, if you'll call roll.
J.P. Hodges. Louis Short.
Here.
Lane Tubbs.
Here.
Pete Harris.
Here.
Chris Foster.
Here.
Ally Sugg.
Here.
Amy Bader.
Here.
And Andy Eklund. Attorney Prince.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Member of the press.
Let the record show we have a quorum. Welcome, Ms. Amy Bader, Chris Foster, and Pete Harris. We're excited to have you. Okay, next we need to do a resolution for council procedures. Would anyone like to read it?
I'll do it, Casey.
Okay.
A resolution, what number would this be?
One twenty-five oh one.
Oh.
Fresh start.
That was a great.
I said twenty-four, it's okay.
Whatever. A resolution establishing procedures for the conduct of meetings of the Heber Springs City Council, whereas Arkansas Code annotated 1443-501A1C requires that the governing body of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas determine the rules of its proceeding during the first meeting in January, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas. Section one, meetings of the City Council of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, shall be held at the Community Center 201 Bobby Jean Lane, Heber Springs, Arkansas. However, nothing shall preclude the relocation of meetings, regular or special, to an alternate location. Notice will be given to the public at least five days in advance in the event of scheduled relocation. All meetings of the City Council, regular or special, will be recorded in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section 25, 19106. Section two, regular meetings of the Heber Springs City Council will be held the third Thursday of each month beginning at 6:00 p.m. Special meeting times and locations will be posted on the door of the Heber Springs Council Room and as otherwise required. Section three, an agenda shall be prepared by the Heber Springs City Clerk for every regular and special meeting of the City Council. The agenda shall contain any item of business that any member of the Heber Springs City Council or the mayor presents for inclusion on the agenda. Any item of business to be included will be submitted with a brief written explanation for the requested consideration to the city clerk not later than 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, one week prior to the regular meeting date. Agendas for special meetings will be prepared with the consideration of the requirement for public notice. Agendas shall be delivered by mail or other means to members of the City Council, mayor and press, no later than seven days prior to the meeting date. Section four, notwithstanding the foregoing subsection of this ordinance, the City Council may by majority vote of the members present-elect to place any matter before the City Council for consideration at that meeting. Section five, the city clerk shall place any items of business to be before the members of the Heber Springs City Council on the agenda under the appropriate category according to the following order of business. Items under new business which are not resolved are to be, again, placed under old business until resolution or removal by council vote. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, roll call, motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approval of minutes, approval of payments. Financial statements, supervisor reports on business, new business, open mic announcements, and adjournments. A council member may vote to approve minutes of a meeting even though he or she was not present at said meeting as an expression of confidence in the veracity of the secretary, the actions of her colleagues, and the correctness of the minutes' preparation process. In section seven, any ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of said conflict. Section eight, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such invalidities shall not affect the remainder of the section's phrases or provisions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Amy Bader?
Aye.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes as presented of the October 17th, 2024, City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Vicki, when you're ready.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes plus excerpts as presented on the December 19th, 2024, City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of the payments journals from December 1st to December 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Vicki?
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of the Street Fund Financial Statement Fund, General Fund Financial Key Center O and M, and Miss Lance's funds dated December 31st, 2024.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, you have your supervisor reports. Do you have any questions for the supervisors? Fantastic. We'll get on to unfinished business. We got the third and final reading of the zoning map. Want to suspend the rules and read it by title only, or do we need to read the whole thing?
You can suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Read it by title only for a third time.
Can I get a second?
Second. Vicki? Amy Bader?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. An ordinance amending the zoning map attached here too and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve the amending of the zoning map.
Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Vicki?
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to new business, to say the state of the city address. As we enter into 2025, I am proud to declare that our city stands in a firm, strong financial position, and we are ready to tackle the opportunities ahead. In 2024, we achieved significant milestones, including the completion of the Sulphur Creek Trail, the Weddingford Sidewalk Project, and extensive renovations to the emergency service building, and the establishment of our new city hall building. If you haven't seen it, you should totally come by. We're pressing forward with essential projects such as our storm water management, downtown beautification, and the rehabilitation of the community center. The development of the splash pad is underway, and the expansion of the fire base for the fire department. Our city, the state of our city, is robust, and our future is undeniably bright. I want to express my gratitude to all the local businesses, residents, and council and department heads, employees. It is a privilege to serve this great community.
It is.
Okay, hey, we've got the DAV contract.
Have any of these changed?
No. They are all the same, same amount.
So for the new ones, do you want to explain what all these are?
Oh. This is the Disabled American Veterans Contract. They're nonprofit, and we give them $1,000.
Annual.
Annual, yeah.
Yes, annually. All these contracts are annually, so we have to renew them every year.
I'll make a motion to approve the DAV contract as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Any questions or discussion?
Nope.
Question, yes, ma'am. Do these rates ever change? Does this transport the number of veterans that we have? Is this sufficient?
Typically, if they want an increase, they'll ask before budget time, and then that money will go into the budget. We did have an increase, I believe it was last year, for the senior center, and so we had to put that in the budget ahead of time. Anything else? Did that help? Ms. Vicki?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next is the Humane Society Contract, and same thing, they did not increase their rates this year.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 Humane Society Contract as presented.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, Ms. Vicki?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, the Sugarloaf Heritage Council Contract, and they did ask for an increase just before budget time, and we were able to give that to them.
And that's to clean Sugarloaf? I mean, they do a lot of work.
Yeah, to clean graffiti, help with the trails, keep those clean.
That's $3,500 in case any of y'all wanted.
Yeah, $3,500 for the year.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Ms. Vicki?
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Welcome, Andy. Okay, next, we have the agreement with the Cleveland County Aging Program, and it is $27,500 for services for the Senior Citizen Center.
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Any discussion?
I wonder was it last year?
It was the same. It was the year before that that we went up.
I got you.
And that's, I mean, we basically had to do that to help save them.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, we even gave them extra money that year. Excuse me.
Do other communities in the county support the Cleveland County Aging Program as well?
The county does, for sure. Yes, they give more since it is a county entity. When you're ready.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. I do have those numbers, if you'd like to see them. Not with me, but I can get them to you. Okay, next is the State District Court Program Contract. Now, since Stone County has been added to this, our portion has gone down around $4,400.
That's good, right?
Yeah.
Sounds like positive.
This is not anything that we have any choice in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I did have a question. I guess Mountain View and Stone are just splitting their cost. They're the exact same. And ours is based off of population or percentage used, or? I mean, I mean, Mountain View and Stone are 11,944,70 each.
Judge Ruttson has his calculations based on population, and I can't remember right off the bat, Lane, how to answer that question, but I don't, well, actually, I don't know why they're the exact same number. Maybe because the largest portion of the population is within Mountain View. I'm just really not sure about that.
Right here, there's a note that said that Stone County will pay to the state, and Mountain View will reimburse.
Yeah, it's all, yeah.
For their 50/50 cost sharing agreement for Stone County.
So they're.
I have an agreement.
Chief?
I was actually talking to Amy Burser yesterday about something.
Okay.
She said that they operate on.
That makes sense.
Operate on what?
They only operate one court.
Oh.
But instead of being in different cities, the way we are in Cleveland County, they're just only in Mountain View.
Quipman gets more sales tax return back and stuff than Greshvery does, but Greshvery has to pay a higher tax, or a higher court fee.
It's just statutory, the statute prescribes the way.
Makes no difference, we have no control.
We have no control. The statute prescribes the way that the formula has to be calculated, and Judge Rutt, I'm not sure if he volunteered or was voluntold to do the calculations, but he did that, and he did a good job.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 State District Court Program Contract.
Second.
Any more discussion or questions? Vicki, when you're ready.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a resolution to waive competitive bidding. Would anyone like to read it? I'll do it.
Care if you'd like to.
A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit All Wheel Drive for the Police Department of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas. Whereas the City of Heber Springs has received, and the City Council has reviewed a quote from Red River Dodge of Heber Springs, Arkansas, attached here too, is Exhibit A for the purchase of a 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit All Wheel Drive, VIN 1C4RDJFG3SC519776. I believe the price and availability for the automobile to be advantageous, and whereas due to the availability of automobiles, and the availability, I can't say it right for some reason, qualified installers and services are limited, and whereas the City Council has determined in its best interest of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, and its citizens to provide funding for the amount of approximately $43,896 for the purchase of a 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit All Wheel Drive, for the use of City of Heber Springs Police Department, and to waive competitive bidding for the same. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the Heber Springs, Arkansas. Section one, competitive bidding is hereby waived, and the quote secured by the mayor of Heber Springs for the purchase of a 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit All Wheel Drive, in the approximate amount of $43,896 is hereby authorized, and the mayor is authorized to expand said funds to purchase said automobile, and to take such other actions as necessary in connection therewith to order to complete the purchase, further all previous actions of the mayor and her designate in connection therewithen hereby approved and ratified.
Casey, will you kind of, for the ones that are new, kind of go over why we would waive the bidding process?
Okay, we waive the competitive bidding process so that we don't have to get three quotes if something is less expensive. That's not the only thing, help me out, Rebecca.
Well, in these instances.
Sometimes they go to state bid.
In these instances, who we're outfitting a patrol car is specialized, we want to make sure that we have quality and quality assurance control of that.
And when you purchase one that's not completely outfitted, you only are allotted so much money, like $600 by the state, so if you waive competitive bidding, it solves that.
And doesn't Dodge have the, Red River have the state traffic anyway?
Yes.
They do.
And we want to buy local.
We would, yes.
And we want to buy local.
Yes, as best we can.
And it's less expensive than the other makes, and it matches what we've got. There's a lot of these reasons.
Yeah. Do you have any questions about that? That sounds above board to me.
And it's already budgeted in. What was the resolution number?
Two.
2025 dash zero two.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to waive competitive bidding for the $20,000.
Mike, can I get a second?
Second.
Vicki, when you're ready.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have the quote for the patrol car at $43,896 that we would like approved to be able to purchase.
Make a motion to purchase the patrol car at $43,896.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion?
That, one?
Yes.
What we got in the budgets, one?
Yes, sir.
And you're saving up off some other stuff for the second that you're, I know you're going to ask for at some point? No, you said you were saving up for some funds you had.
Seems like you talked about six months and we would look at it. Okay, Vicki?
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have an invoice for Gym Masters. This was for the gym floor. This is the second payment out of three, and it's for $24,850.
They've already done this work too, haven't they?
Well, no, they do something each year, Josh.
But they closed down at Christmas, didn't you?
Y'all just resurfaced it, right?
Yeah. Okay, so they've already done this.
So they better pay it.
Yeah.
Or just one time, or we could be able to come back three times, or it's said need for, because I call through back, and each year we have to go ahead and create, so we'll have to do it again one more time.
Yeah. It looks good.
Yeah. Make a motion, we pay the invoice for Gym Masters for $24,850.
Thank you, sir. Hi, any discussion? Vicki, when you're ready.
Right, Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I have city clerk and city attorney ordinance.
I'll read it, please.
Okay.
An ordinance establishing the salary of certain municipal officials in the City of Heber Springs and for other purposes be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas as follows. The salary of the city clerk is set at $9,794.56 per year. Salary of the city attorney is set at $48,689.46 per year. The effective date of this ordinance shall be January 1st, 2025. In the event that any portion provision subsection or part of this ordinance is later ruled to be invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the other provisions of this ordinance, which shall be given effect without the invalid portion or portions, and to the end, the provisions And to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are declared to be severable.
Z O 1?
It's the first one. Is this the first one?
Two, I think.
Oh, it's, okay.
Yes.
O two? What was that one?
I don't, I don't remember doing it. I don't remember doing it.
Oh, I was like, first.
Is it, why, has it changed that much?
I don't think it's changed at all.
It did change.
This year?
Yeah.
Yeah, regular race.
Oh, I had no idea.
You're welcome.
Thank you. No idea.
Now you gotta show up.
I know. I've missed two meetings this year, and my attendance is not required, so I do enjoy the pleasure.
I need your attendance.
Doesn't make the difference to the requirement.
I do enjoy the pleasure of your company, however.
Okay, Vicki, when you're ready?
Glad you're here, by the way.
Okay, thank you, Ally.
Second.
Second, thank you, Andy. Vicki, when you're ready?
A motion, he second.
Is that to suspend other readings and?
Oh.
Do that on this one?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's what the motion was for.
You shouldn't say that, that's what you meant.
Yes.
All right, so Amy Bader?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Wait.
We gotta suspend the rules and read it by title only.
We gotta suspend the rules and read it by title only, and place it on the second reading.
Got it.
Bet you didn't do that anymore.
Ordinance number 2025-02, an ordinance establishing the salary of certain municipal officials in the City of Heber Springs and for other purposes.
Okay.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
What are we voting on now?
Same thing.
We suspended the rules.
Nobody said it after you did just now.
I did.
I was under the assumption we were suspending all the rules and just reading it that one time, but no, we're going to read it three.
I thought that that was, uh, after the last, from municipal league, we found out we didn't have to do that, we could do it with just the one time. They have to suspend it by Robert's rules.
That's correct. But I've read it as many times as you want to.
We're happy to, we're happy to read it only once, if you tell it only once.
Yeah, okay.
Tony, a motion to approve the ordinance.
Yes.
Is that where we are?
Yes.
So Louis with the motion and a, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Vicki, when you're ready?
Okay, Louis Short?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Does somebody have a fan for Vicki?
Oh, Lord have mercy.
Okay, next, appoint Nick Williams to planning and zoning.
I make a motion to appoint Nick Williams to planning and zoning?
Second it.
Any discussion? Vicki, when you're ready?
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need an emotion, an emotion, uh, a motion to appoint Andy Eklund to planning and zoning.
Make a motion, we appoint Andy to planning and zoning. Does he know it?
I'll second it.
Did I know?
You did.
Does Nick know?
Hmm, maybe.
He's going on year three, he should by now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's chairman. Okay, Vicki, when you're ready?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Abstain.
Motion carried. Next, a motion to appoint Ms. Amy Bader to Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Motion to appoint Amy Bader to Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Second.
Any discussion?
How long is this appointment?
One year.
Depends. How long is the deli?
Eight years. Vicki, when you're ready?
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Abstain.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Amy. Next, appoint Ally Sugg to Advertising and Promotion Commission.
I'll make a motion, we do that fast.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Vicki?
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Abstain.
Motion carried. Thank you all. Next, we have open mic. Anybody like to address the council? Mr. Allen? Come up to the podium, please.
Hey, Allen.
There may be a microphone up there. Do you mind to use it? Is it on, Ronnie?
Turn it on.
Turn it on for us.
So you can be recorded.
We're complicated.
I have a light, now you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, okay. Hi, guys. I'm a county JP, but I'm not here about that. So anyway, we appreciate all you do, and we're working great together, enjoy that. But the reason I'm here, actually, is because there's a new submarine being built right now, and we are honored as a state that it's being named the USS Arkansas. So that's why I'm wearing this stuff. This is, uh, representing that submarine. My brother and myself are the, the main part of the commission, commissioning committee, and what that means is, we kind of tie the state with the submarine. We had the christening ceremony on December 7th, and there were several people from Arkansas that went, including French Hill, went and represented the state, and it was an outstanding ceremony, it was really interesting. And the commissioning will be probably in early '26. In case you wonder what in the world we do, we have about four different parties that we host, uh, once the commissioning is happening, um, which will include state people, as well as obviously submarine and Navy people. We decorate the submarine with stuff from Arkansas. We bring the crew here from, uh, the submarine. In fact, we brought them three times, and we're going to bring, the next time we're going to bring some of them is going to be in April. We've gone to several different cities, mostly Little Rock, Jonesboro, Mountain Home, and Fayetteville to, to date. We're going to try and do some of southeast Arkansas in April, uh, maybe out as far as Fort Smith, maybe out west, too, but eventually maybe even bring some to Heber Springs, because both of the commissioning committee heads are here in Heber Springs. We went to the mayor's conference, obviously, uh, several of you, not just your mayor, it's good to see, a lot of you guys were there, and we proposed, uh, something that we're doing to offer every city in the state to be able to support by donating money to, uh, represent a rack. A rack is a bunk. There's 172 bunks that the sailors sleep in, and they get a bunk curtain for privacy. Yeah, that's all you get. But, um, that bunk curtain, we're going to decorate them with the city that sponsors that bunk, and so instead of it being bunk number 32, they could live in the Heber Springs bunk. And, uh, we would decorate that, we would embroider, uh, whatever logo that Heber Springs, if, assuming, that's why I'm here, I'm trying to talk you guys into doing that, um, with the Heber Springs, uh, logo, whatever you'd like to put on there. The curtains are donated by the Navy, they, they buy those, obviously, but we would have to pay for the embroidery, and of course, the $1,000, it won't cost that, obviously. We're doing it to raise the money. We also sell all this good stuff that says USS Arkansas, and we, we, I have that, if you want some, see me, I can get you whatever you want.